Okay.
Okay, I'll call Rich County Commission meeting October second to order. Um, first thing on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cox, would you lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our agenda's updated, good to go, Annalisa?
Yep.
Make a motion that we set the agenda for October second, twenty twenty four.
Second. Okay, motion to set the agenda for today, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, Randall. Bring your boss up with you. State your name and.
Randall Knight, Garden City Fire District Board Chair.
Jane Davis, I don't know what I am.
Well, I just wanna bring you guys up to speed on what we've been doing. Uh, so the main thing I want to uh acknowledge is is that one of our board members had to resign his position because of family issues. And so we put out an opening for a board member and Jane uh applied and we have accepted her and here to introduce her to you guys and have you also accept her and sustain her as a board member.
Move to approve Jane Davis to the appointment of the Rich Garden City Fire District Board. When, last week?
Yeah, last week, last meeting, right, we've already appointed?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
And I know you from years gone by that you'll do good.
Oh, soon.
You'll be good on there, so.
I will try my hardest.
We love local, grown and raised here to be on them boards, we thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, we're fortunate that she stepped up at the time that she did. Uh, all the board, other board members are busy getting PhDs and jobs and in charge of the family place. So Jane has accepted being the clerk and that's what Doug did and Doug's going to train her for the first time to hand off that responsibility to train the person that's taken that position. And uh, and Lisa knows what that's like, so you two will get to know each other when we go forward in trying to uh increase uh property tax to get more money to help upgrade capability, replace our equipment and start building uh, a building on that annex property that we're still trying to get. Nate Perry's been having a hard time getting a surveyor to get in to finish the survey work so that we can actually buy it. Uh, he's uh going to put a culvert in the property so that trucks can start going in and dumping clean fill dirt in there and uh help reduce the cost to build that level up to equal the same elevation that Travis Hobbs' place is next to us. They're on Sweetwater Parkway. So the other things that we've accomplished is went through all the records that had been put in boxes over the years and eliminate all the old stuff that you're probably been doing as well as the clerk and coming on base. And reduced nine thick boxes down to one-third of a box of stuff that was relevant to keep and so a lot of stuff had to be shredded. That's been taken care of, our uh policy and procedure manuals, employee manuals have been updated with Doug's supervision over that and so it's not gonna be hard for Jane to make the minor modifications that come up in the future. We've authorized the chief to go out and replace a nineteen fifty-eight brush truck and so he's in the process of finding a, a truck and equipping that with what it needs. We still have two other trucks that are thirty years old that we wanna replace in the next couple of years and start hopefully getting a garage down on that annex property that could have maybe two trucks on it and of course lockers for all the PPE equipment so guys can just immediately go right there and get dressed to go fight the fire and not have two separate places. One with the PPE and the trucks at a different place, they can just go there and get on the side as fast as possible. So that's uh our plan and uh so I still need some help from you guys and recognizing all the growth that's going on uh in the area. And so I'm gonna be probably having to increase the property tax to get that 'cause right, you can't depend upon the impact fee which is bringing in extra money for us to uh cover the costs of the future.
So, we'll just sum that live there close report to that fire?
Yeah.
Shed and any others there or do they all just go wherever?
They go to the closest fire station to get dressed up in their PPE to go in.
So will they have to have two sets of PPE?
Yeah, right, and those things are expensive.
I know.
Yeah, so, that's the idea. Uh, you are, you guys are probably familiar with all the growth that's going on right behind this new place of expansion going on, I understand they're close to a hundred uh uh units being built in that area and then this year, I guess, and next year.
Okay, so what's the feedback you're getting from residents when you, when you bring up property tax increase?
Nobody ever shows up to the public meetings.
Yeah. They show up to the uh tax meet, uh BOE, the Board of Equalization, that's for sure, so you haven't got any feedback from it.
We have public hearings on budgets and uh nobody ever shows up.
Yeah.
When do we have to have the tea, the truth in taxation?
I can understand you with the background.
Sorry. When, I guess I can, it's uh Tiffany Walberg is working with, is it the cemetery or the fire district that's gonna be doing the truth in taxation notices?
Well, whoever's raising the taxes, it'll be both of them, if they're raising taxes.
Both of them?
They each have to have their own truth in taxation hearing, it also has to be published.
Yeah, I, I can't remember, she's getting that ready, I just couldn't remember when those meetings are.
Uh, she's getting it ready?
It's for, I, I didn't quite understand 'cause they're on a different, they're on a fiscal year instead of a calendar year, so, uh Tiffany Walberg.
No, she's not, she's on exactly the same year we are.
I just didn't, I couldn't quite understand why we didn't have the truth in taxation earlier, but there was a reason for it. I guess I'll keep asking her, so, in the tax question.
There's a deadline when you have to have it published in the paper as well as having the hearings before you can actually consider it in your budget.
She was asking about papers to publish it in and so I'll get back with her.
I think it's cemetery.
Cemetery, I couldn't remember, okay.
The only reason is because I'm on the cemetery board, so I, I think that, I think it's cemetery.
Thank you, thank you, I couldn't remember which one it was, okay.
Wait, is that where we put you on last month, the cemetery board, so we do?
And I'm done, I'm not doing anymore.
We do need to make a motion, right, 'cause it was a cemetery board that we put, we put her on last month.
Well, that's.
Not last month, no.
A couple months ago, when we saw you out in the parking lot afterwards.
Couple months ago. Yes, 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 yeah, that was cemetery, correct.
Okay.
Okay, you're right.
So, does your motion still stand?
It does.
Okay, second.
Okay, we got a motion to accept Garden City Fire District's new fire board member Jane Davis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried unanimously.
All right, guys, you got anything for me to check out?
No, but Jane, thank you for being willing to serve, sometimes it's gonna seem inconvenient, as you probably know, uh and we, if we find good people, uh, we like to tap into them, as you can now tell, being on two boards. But just quickly, 'cause people do watch the video afterwards, maybe you could just tell us who you are, uh, you know, and, and how you've been in Rich County for a long time?
So, uh, my maiden name is Hodges, I grew up in Pickleville, went to school at uh North Ridge, uh moved away and came back home about five years ago.
Okay.
So happy to be back.
And you've had that house right there at the bottom of Hodges County for a long time?
Be back home. Exactly, that's, and that's the house I grew up in, yeah.
Okay, awesome, just so people know who you are.
Yep, that's who I am.
Cool, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, yep.
All right, thanks guys, appreciate it, Anna, good to see you.
Good to see you, Anna.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, nice to meet you, good to see you.
Yep, see ya.
Okay.
Heather, come on up. Line us out.
All right.
State your name and why, why you're here.
By the way, her last name's different now.
It is, I am Heather McKee Olson.
Okay.
Yes, as of a few weeks ago, so.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, um, and I am with the Bearver Health Department and I'm here, um, they have me as a coalition facilitator uh specific to Rich County, um, and so I'm here to kind of explain a little bit of what we're, our goal is and kind of what we're doing to help um the youth better um stay away from opioid use and substance misuse um and teach them some education. Um, so we follow a CTC um framework, where CTC is communities that care. Um, the way that they name it is communities that cares because it's not one specific person that's over it, it's the community that cares. Um, it's the community that comes together um to better help the youth um stay on the right track. Um, CTC is a way to bring our community together to work on preventing um health and behavioral problems in um young people before they start and a process that a community goes through to make it safer and healthier for everybody. Um, and we do know that there is another coalition um that is going over here and they focus on intervention and postvention, so they come in after the fact, um, when something unfortunate happens. Um, but our goal with this coalition is to come in before something happens, so we wanna focus on prevention. Um, so then if we work hand in hand with the other coalition that is already here and that is existing, that has been going for a while, we can hit all aspects of um health, which would be prevention, intervention and postvention. Um, and it is evidence-based, there is data that shows that this does work. Um, and how they know that is they've done multiple studies um to see the impact that it does have. And um the data that we use is the SHARP data. Um, I don't know how familiar you guys are with SHARP data, but it is offered to sixth, eighth, tenth and twelfth graders. Um, and it is anonymous and it is an opt-in survey where they choose to take it. Um, and it asks specific questions about school safety, mental health, substance use, things like that that give us a better idea of what they are seeing in their schools, um, since they are the advocates for themselves um being able to see those things that maybe us as adults or parents don't see. Um, and so we use that data to better help tailor our efforts to focus on what they see um and the needs that they, they see that they need in the schools.
Did you say Sharp or Shark?
Sharp.
Sharp.
Yep, it's Student Health and Risk Prevention Survey.
Okay.
Um.
Have you got a lot of response from Rich County kids?
We have not, um, last time we had, we have about less than a hundred people, um, students that participate in it and our goal is to keep promoting it, go to events, give information of why it's important and how it can benefit people here. Um, and it's not just another thing that we ask somebody to do, it's not just to check a box. Um, but our goal is to keep coming over here and promoting um Sharp and giving them education of what exactly Sharp is and how it can benefit the youth and how it can benefit um even the adults if um the youth are on a better trajectory. Um, that can also help with um adults as well.
Heather, why don't you explain just a little bit about um the survey itself and how we do that?
How it's like administered or kind of, okay, yeah, so they, the school are the ones who administer that. Um, it's the superintendent and the counselors. Um, and the parents have to sign a permission slip or permission for the student to take it. Um, but the student also has to sign um that they are okay to take it. Um, and again, it's opt-in, so they don't have to, it's not required, um, but it's encouraged that they participate in that. Um, and it takes them about a half an hour to an hour to complete it. Um, and that's the length of time that they're given, if they don't complete it, that's no big deal. Um, we use the information that we can get from that. Um, and if they don't know any of the, if they don't know an answer to a question, they can skip over it. Um, we don't, they don't have to get every answer, if they don't know, um, they're welcome to skip it and come back or just skip it altogether. Um, so they just answer the questions that they know or that they feel comfortable answering, so.
So, like what's a, what's one of the questions that they might know?
That they might not know?
Yes.
Um, so they have, there are so many different questions in there, um, but there are a few that are, um, it can ask about alcohol use, so they might not know, if they're not familiar with that, it could be how accessible is alcohol for youth to get? Um, or how many kids when they're at home are drinking or using drugs? Um, things like that that they might not be as familiar with. Um, but then some other questions could be school-related, how safe do you feel at school? Um, how do your teachers praise you when you do something well? Or if things don't go as well, how do your teachers help you with that?
That'd be an interesting survey, that'd be good.
It, there's quite a few questions that are outside of, you know, when was the last time you used alcohol? Um, where did you get the alcohol and, you know, what drugs have you used? There's, there's also, you know, some questions about um how they feel about school, you know, I mean, are they, to kind of identify not only uh, uh, substance abuse, but do they have depression issues? Do they have uh, 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 you know, their, how do they feel about themselves? You know, those kind of things and, and it's a, it's actually a really good survey that, that covers a lot of different things that the school could identify. Um, but it, you know, for prevention, it's, it's really good to find out, you know, are your parents giving you alcohol? Is that where you get it? Um, and it's, it's totally anonymous, but I think it's kind of scary that somehow or other, if they answer it, you know, truthfully, that it'll get back to them and I think that's it, I think that's one of the things that people, the students are reluctant to, to take it is they, you know, anymore, you think everything's anonymous and then all of a sudden it shows up on Facebook and so it's, um, our participation in Rich County has continued to decline over the years. Um, ten years ago, we had a pretty high percentage of, of students who were taking it. Now, what, what would you guess our percentage is?
Not very high.
Probably less than ten to fifteen percent, probably something like that.
I wonder why?
Kids are just reluctant to, I mean, they just don't, I don't think they feel safe about filling it out, even, you know, an honest answer.
Is it a paper survey?
Yeah.
Yeah, and like you were saying, I appreciate you adding all that, it, there is no way to tie it back to any of the students, but I think that that's a big.
Stigma, yeah.
The stigma is, will they'll be able to tell, they can tell this, they can look at this and we have no idea who said what, but.
They probably feel like they can, they can get tied back to him because there's so many barriers of entry. They have to sign a paper, their parents have to sign a paper, and I get why that all happens, but it seems like there's signatures on a paper somewhere saying you took it.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
We've run into quite a few parents who won't sign the release, they don't want their kids taking it. That's sad.
It's a good, it's a good information in there, it's just trying to get it, um, the stigma away from it, that it can be tied back or that it's something scary or that we're gonna come in and change everything and that's not our goal. We're to work with what's already going to improve and make things better that are already existing and.
I think you're gonna come and say, we know that was you, so come in here, we're gonna talk to you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if it was blinking, then it would be muted.
Have you guys tried doing like micro questions on Instagram, like anonymous type, you know, answer this, 'cause you know you can answer anonymously through social media.
We have not, but that's something that would be good to try.
Just get it, yeah, blast out to Cash County or whatever.
Yeah.
You'll get some kids that are on their phone that will answer.
That will answer it.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. Any other questions for me or?
So is, are you specifically targeted towards uh substance abuse, just alcohol, alcohol and opiates and things like that?
Yeah, so I, the health department actually got granted some funding um for me to come over and get this going and it does have to, we do have to have at least a little bit of focus on opioid misuse and stuff. And we can focus on other things as well, but we do have to have at least a tie to some sort of opioid misuse.
So e- even alcohol's outside the parameters of?
Yeah, we can tie it in, but again, we have to have the opioid focus as well, so, but some things we can.
So, this, is this, the settlement money's being used for?
Some of our settlement money um would be used in this program, yeah.
Yep.
So, and I, I understood that uh some of it was to do with uh depression maybe and maybe severity of depression?
Yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah, so we can also, a lot of those things do tie into opioid um misuse. A lot of times if they um unfortunately have depression or anxiety, they're more likely to use substances and so that can also tie in. Um, there's a lot of ways we can tie things in, um, we just kind of have to look at exactly what we're wanting to focus on and see how we can tailor that to fit the correct funding and the correct parameters for the youth and adults here as well as the funding that we were luckily given.
So I was gonna say, pretty quickly, I'll, I'll, it's dried up pretty fast as far as how often prescribers give that out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's nice we have that money, it'd be nice if we could use it towards some like social media misuse and those types of things that are, we're just barely starting to see messing kids up, you know?
Yeah. And there's a lot of things we can tie it to, it's not just set in stone, we have to do it this way or this way. Um, the big thing we're seeing is a lot of vaping, um, and so that's something we're kind of looking at and how we can um tie that into opioid and substance misuse and things like that and how all those factors kind of come into it, but we're not set in one thing, if there's something we wanna look at, we're more than happy to look into something or anything like that.
So how often are you, what do, what's, what are you doing in the schools right now? Um, as far as are we, are we doing, um, what type of prevention programs are, are we, are, are we trying to do in the schools, Heather?
So, that's a work in progress, um, right now we have a few people that are, we're currently working on picking a priority that we wanna focus on and how we can get that more into the schools. So right now we don't have a ton of prevention in the schools right now, um, but we have a couple of the counselors, someone from the family place and CAPS that we're all working together to see what we can work on and then put that into the schools of how um prevention programs that we wanna work on, once we kind of figure out what we wanna focus on and tailor it down a little bit so we don't have, so we're not looking at thirty different things and um, we can kind of tailor it and then figure out how we can put that into the schools. So right now we don't have a ton that I'm aware of, but hopefully here in the next little bit, we'll have, have some more going in the schools, so.
So, are you able to involve like the youth council that the school has?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and have them, you know, maybe identify some things that, that, that they would help promote, you know?
Yeah, we love to have youth involved, they're, they're the ones that see it, they're the ones that are around it, so we'd love to have their voice and um having them a part of anything we can to help tailor things and they might see things that we're not aware of and bringing in their perspective would be awesome.
Have you met with the school board?
I'm not.
I think it would be a good idea if you get on the school board agenda and uh just kind of, you know, talk about the things that you just talked about, the, the Sharp survey and the participation and and um have them give you some support and some ideas of maybe, uh, you know, how you can start getting some prevention. Uh, either, you know, either a, a class or a supposium or something that, you know, I think that would be good if you, you would work with the school board on that. You know, I think that would be good if you, you would work with the school board on that and.
I think that's a good idea.
That's awesome, yeah. Totally can do that.
Um, as far as, so. Where are we at on the Sharp Survey, is it, I'm trying to think what the timeline is on that, have we done, have we done twenty twenty four already?
So it'll be twenty twenty five is the next year, so they do it every other year.
Yeah.
Um, so they, we're looking at twenty twenty three's data right now, um, and then in twenty twenty five, I believe they offer it in the spring. Um, is when they take that, so then we can have it for the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six year.
I was thinking it was in April, if I remember right.
Yeah.
But I, I, and that's why I think it would be really good for you to start to, to talk to the school board and tell them that. You know, the Sharp Survey's coming up and, and maybe just give a little, you know, some information about the fact that. You know, so students and parents understand that it's an anonymous survey, but. The, the information there really helps the overall, uh. Issues of, of, of the school and the school district and kids and, you know, and, and I think it, I think it. I'm trying to think, um, I mean, I've, I've actually took it a couple of different times, um. Uh, cause I've been involved with, um, with substance abuse, um. It, we're on a state level and, and you know, these, I get to see it on a, on a district and the, the participation on. Across the state and we have, we are one of the lowest, um, of kids that. Percentage of kids that actually participate. Some of the, you know, and so, uh, it, it, it's important and really good information to kind of have some targets of. You know, is it opioids, is it, is it alcohol, what's the big things that are within an area that? You know, um, and what age do you start and where kids are getting their alcohol and where they're getting their drugs? Uh, the thing that shocked me was is, um. Uh, you know, we've got kids who, who start smoking and they get cigarettes from, or. From either their older siblings or their parents and at twelve and thirteen and. You know, it's like, wow, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
So you said it was the tenth and twelfth in high school, tenth and twelfth grade?
Yep, so it's sixth, eighth, tenth and twelfth.
Is there any possibility of expanding it to all high school grades for like rural areas, just to get more participation?
Not that I'm aware of, um, yeah, I know a lot of the data that we have, there isn't a lot of participation with tenth and twelfth grade and so we haven't been able to get. As much accurate data from those two grades, but there's more participation with sixth and eighth graders, so.
Yeah, cause their parents tell them to do it.
Uh-huh. Yep.
I think you could find a few student advocates that would help gather classmates to do it in Rich County, it would just be identifying who. You know, could, cause I can think of a few kids that I would ask, can you take this and can you find some of your classmates that would do it and I, and I think they could round up. Enough people willing to do it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe student advocates, um, cause I wanted, I want access to the data too, cause if you hang out with the high schooler for a little bit. Your eyes are open to quite a bit to what's going on, you know, if they're hanging out with you, really telling you about their experiences.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely.
Um, it'd be nice to have that data as governments to, to use it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
That's everything I have for you guys, thanks for listening.
Well, you have, uh, you have our full hundred percent support, so.
Thank you, thank you.
And, um. Yeah, I, I agree with both commissioners, I think that, uh, the school board is a good place to go and I also think. I think, uh, he's right on, if you get the right couple of, to, a little handful of students, they can bring some more with them.
Mm-hmm.
If you get the right guy to ask them, yeah. And I think our superintendent has a pretty good, uh, relationship with some of them and I think he could, I think he could. Maybe talk someone into it, to bring some. So with the, the, the school board, when you're talking to them, hit him up about that.
Okay.
That idea.
And I, and I would go, you, you know, I think what I would do is, is request to be on the school board agenda, so. All the board members are hearing the same thing along with the superintendent, but he may wanna have. Some discussion about it before, but I think it would be good if all the school board members understood and. And they will, they'll know bits and pieces of it, but it would be really good if they saw it from your end, how important the survey is. From, from your end of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Travel safe.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, nice to meet you too.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
So who's your direct supervisor?
Farren.
Is Farren?
Farren Mees, yeah.
I can't believe Brock left.
I know, he was actually my supervisor before he retired, I was like, what the heck? Thinks he can go and molly guy?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Farren's good, so. Okay. Brayden, is that a phone thing or?
Yeah. Okay, uh, eight oh one.
Nine one three four four five seven.
Say again?
Nine one three. Four four five seven.
Hello?
Hello, is this Brayden?
Yeah, this is Brayden.
Uh, this is the Rich County Commission calling.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
Can you, uh, go ahead and state your name and, and then what's your, uh, what's your? Coming before the commission for, for us, for the record?
Yeah, my name is Brayden Daly, I'm, uh, coming to the commission for the, uh, business license of, uh, Dave, Daily Hammer LLC.
Okay. Why don't you tell us a little about that business?
Yeah, so we're planning on, uh, doing, uh, just kind of like a residential home services, so, I mean, we're thinking about doing, so we have a place in, uh. Garden City, so we're thinking about doing like snow removal, possibly during like seasonality things, possibly during the summer, doing some lawn care. Pieces of it, just trying to kind of start our own, uh, our own little business and. We've seen a little niche there, so hoping for the best of it.
Okay. Do you, you're not, uh, coming in doing ha- handyman work? Or you are?
So it, it may, so that's, we will not be doing handyman work because I don't have a handyman license. But I do have, um, someone I know up there that has their handyman license, that if those jobs come up. It will probably just refer them directly to him.
Okay. I see you have an LLC, this co- uh, set up?
Yep.
So you have no physical location, so you're not located anywhere?
So that's, I, I actually sent over the revised, I spoke to, uh, I believe it was, is it Annalisa?
Uh-huh.
And, and she gave me a couple of the edits to, uh, make on there, so I actually put the home address on there, which is three seven three North Sunrise Drive. In Garden City.
Hey. Three seven three North Sunrise Drive?
Yeah. And I just, I didn't know what to put on there at first because it's not something that really has a physical location, it's just services.
But you'll be located there, um, are you gonna, are you gonna be working from somewhere else? I mean, if you, if you're gonna do lawn care, will you not be staying in Rich County or Garden City?
Yeah, so it, it'll be, so yes, I will be located there, but it's not. I, I didn't know if it was like a, you're looking for like a brick and mortar location, like it's not something that we have a. A brick and mortar type of store or anything, it's, uh, just our house.
Okay. And your house is there at Sunrise Drive?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for him?
I do, I make a motion that we approve the business license for Daily Hammer LLC.
I second that. Okay, it's moving second, we approve the business license for Daily Hammer LLC, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you guys.
So you can be in contact with Annalisa's office and she will, um. Issue you the, the certificate and, uh, there'll be a fee for it and you can find out what that is in Annalisa's office, so.
Okay.
Send her an email.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, Eugene. State your name and what's your. For the record.
Lou Jean Argyle, Rich County Treasurer.
Camille Shingle, Rich County Treasurer Deputy.
We've got, I'll let Camille go first, she's got a thing on the building permit.
So we've had a phone calls about how long a permit is good for before it expires. Cause Garden City is cracking down on theirs and so when they call, they're asking if there's a fee that they're supposed to pay. To extend their permit. And so, a couple months ago, I ran, um, a report. And these are from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two of open permits that haven't. Been closed. And some of them have like the four-way done, but then there's. No other notes, no, uh, anything else on there and Tyler's aware of it, um, there's like Reagan. Breaks, is that her last name?
Mm-hmm.
Um, her, her house is on here and she had a temporary occupancy and that's. I think that expired like at, at the beginning of August or sometime in August and it's just like these little things. So I just need to know, cause it's in the, in the county creed, is that what it's called?
No, that sounds awesome though, county code?
The, the county code, yeah, it didn't.
Sounds like it. So.
It, it didn't, it didn't say like how long a permit is good to be open for.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months, okay, so.
Without, and then it needs to be extended.
Okay, so Tyler said that when I gave him these, that this is probably what he's gonna do throughout the winter, is try and look through these. To try and, and close them out, but when people call, what are we supposed to tell them? Cause it's like the, the construction companies and things like that, so I know Garden City charges them a fee, but the county doesn't have anything.
Does it cost to extend them bill?
Yeah. Um, at least there was a fee set up, but I don't remember, seems like it was, I don't, I don't know. So it's not in the code at all?
I didn't see it.
Can we get a copy of those?
I've not, well, and there's nothing on the website that tells people, you know, if you go beyond eighteen months, you need to.
Yeah, so.
Get an extension or something, we need something in there to just kind of help them and help us, cause we don't know what to tell them.
And, like, I. I know that some of these are from when D U was still here.
So, uh, uh, Garden Cities is like two thousand dollars, huh? Two thousand or twenty-five hundred dollars for another.
To extend it?
To extend it.
To extend.
Oh, wow.
And they red tag them, if, if they, they've been red tagging anything that's, their permit's expired, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, they've been, they've been kind of cracking down because of, and you can see why is because. Here we have a list of why are these not closed out and if they were, you know, fine, um.
So is this a combination of our fault and homeowner's fault, not falling up and then us also not?
I don't know, I was like, what me and Lou Jean do with the building permits, we just take their payment.
Yeah.
And then when Tyler says this is okay to approve. Or to give them their permit, then we send their permits out and send out the COs and that's the only thing that we do with the building permit, so.
Yeah.
Tyler's the one who schedules things and I know he has a secretary, but I don't know if we need to like divide them up by streets. Cause I don't know Garden City well enough to know which street is close to each other. But where he does the inspections and he sets the appointments for inspections, I don't know where he's going or when he's coming out. To look at them, just to be like, hey, when you're on the street, like just go look at this house real quick.
Well, it's like this one right here, twenty forty North Better Lake Boulevard. That's, that's not in the county, that's actually in Garden City.
So I don't have access to Garden Cities, I can't look up anything from Garden City.
And I don't know why they. So is this the address of the property being built on?
Yes.
So I don't know why we would even have that in ours, maybe when they were setting up I Works, maybe that one got put in ours by mistake. So we might have to.
Yeah, I, what, what you maybe could do is we could. Get this list to Garden City and find out which ones are in Garden City that they're, you know. It's under their program.
Maybe, maybe in two thousand nineteen, you might have Garden City ones on there, but when. People call in and say, oh, can you look at this permit and I'll look it up by their permit number, their address. And if it isn't Garden City, me and Lou Jean don't have access to it.
Right.
Yeah, Kim can get on there and do Garden City and the counties.
So this was, this, why does this say two thousand nineteen on it?
Because.
Cause there's some.
When the permit was issued.
Yeah, there are some that were issued and then that, they're just not, and some of them probably are legitimately, they just need to be closed out, they just need to be marked. CO on it and.
Well, there ought to be an occupancy permit, I mean, that's, that would what, would be what would close it out is.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, it, a lot of it'll probably be on Tyler, that he'll have to go through them and.
And he has done some, like, cause he'll say, oh, I did this one.
Check the properties.
But the majority of them are still open.
And so then you need us to come up with a fee or at least track down the fee.
Cause, yeah, cause I've talked to Tyler to see if he knows anything and he goes, I don't, and he'll try and look it up. The same as what I've done and he goes, you might have just have to go ask the commissioners about it.
Hey, I know at one time, we, we, we had a fee and it was an extension for, and it was a twelve month extension.
Okay.
Seems to me, well, I, I don't know. Um, and it was kind of right when we were changing building inspection inspectors, um, cause we had a fee schedule. Of, of, uh. Set up and it seems to me like it was, it was two hundred and fifty dollars for another twelve months, but they needed to. You know, it needed to be done, but I, I, I mean, that's been a long time ago and if it's not in the code, then we probably need to establish it in the code.
Okay. So those who are on it, are on a temporary occupancy that has expired.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what we need to do.
Does he need to get on those ones like now?
Yeah, yeah, and they need to find out if they're on temporary. If the, if it's expired, then why do they not have a occupancy?
Okay. Okay.
I know that doesn't answer your question, but I do know that quite a few, quite a few of these, um. You know, could very well could be in Garden City, I'm not saying they are, but I, you know, just as I look through some of these, some of these could be in Garden City. You know, could very well could be in Garden City, I'm not saying they are, but I, you know, just as I look through some of these, some of these could be in Garden City, so. And why, you know, I I don't know.
Yeah, and it's not a crackdown, it's cleanup.
Yeah.
I don't want people to feel like we're doing anything wrong.
No, yeah. And I think Tyler's a good inspector, like just based off of us building our house and things like that, I think he does a thorough job. So I'm not like narking on him or anything.
No, no, but we need to do some cleanup, yeah. No, there's no.
Well, just so we know what to tell people, you know, if they changed contractors or something and just telling, hey, now, just so you know, if you go beyond eighteen months. You're gonna have to do an extension or something.
So I think the first thing you need to get with Garden City and figure out who is ours and who is theirs.
Okay.
Now, the county has, what's our, we have like a five year, right? Is it five years after building permit is issued? You have one year to start and then five years to finish.
Right, so I lived on, when, cause I double checked Reagan's this morning to see if Tyler had gone over there and. There the like on I Works, it says like eighteen months and then it's expired. So I don't know if that's just the thing with I Works or if that's the county's.
That's.
How long a permit is good for?
It's it's the county.
For eighteen months?
Yeah.
Okay. We need to change our website, cause it says five years.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can do that.
Okay. We better get cracking on our houses then.
Well, and I I mean, the thing of it is, is um, you know, it's got an eighteen month on it, but you can, you know, you can get an extension.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the thing, but it was more about a- and 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 the eighteen months is more about just this very thing of where in eighteen months, where are you?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if if you've started or you, you know, are you almost done and and if. If you've gotta get an extension, at least you know that, you know, there's no, been no occupancy permit issued and, you know, there's an issue there, so.
And additionally, we want things to expire, cause you don't want somebody, like when we didn't have a RV park. Uh ordinance, we didn't want somebody applying to do an RV park and holding on to that for five years and it doesn't matter, then any sort of ordinance would pass because. They get to have the laws when they apply.
Yeah.
So a lot of developers will apply and just sit there, you know, because they're fine doing that current laws, but then that buffers them from anything you can do later on.
Okay.
Um, yeah, work with Tyler.
Okay.
And and see and I, he's probably the best one to just take this, go to Garden City and say, is this, you know, is this a Garden City permit? Because he's doing both of them and and he probably would know by the address, so.
Okay.
And out of curiosity, check with Garden City and see what they're.
Okay.
Seems to me like it was twenty-five hundred dollars.
That just seems like an off line.
Yeah, that's why I do have.
That's more than like some of their permits cost.
Yeah, some of ours anyway, not over there probably, but.
Okay.
They have a lot more fees associated than we do on this side, but.
Yeah, they're fee-driven government, which most towns are.
Okay.
Okay.
These are the circuit breakers, there are.
Are they the same on this list here?
Yeah, they're all of them, the one that's not marked with anything is the one that didn't apply, but those I just need to get approved so we can. Put it on the taxes.
Circuit breaker like exemption or something or what is it?
It's like a tax.
Exemption.
Exemption.
Well, it's not really even exemption, it's um.
Discount or something?
Discount is basically what it is, an offset.
Yeah. Cause the veterans is in a.
Thanks Heather.
Thank you.
Cause it's based on what their property taxes are versus um.
Their income.
As and then it's a reduction in their property tax, so it's not a full exemption. And whatever um the state makes it up, so whatever we we've um reduced the taxes by, the state actually will make that up. Okay, I would make a motion that um. That we grant the circuit breakers to the list that's been presented to us.
Second.
Okay, moving second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
You'd put your little John Henry on there. There's only eight of them luckily, so.
It's already October.
Yeah, the second.
While he's done that, I just have a question, is this what?
This one just got the monthly. What is it called, the tax, you know, from all the transient room and optional, so. I normally keep around eighty thousand in there and it had a five hundred thousand dollar deposit. That's just what's in there right now, it hasn't been moved out yet to the PTIF.
I was gonna say, like, will you move it up to here?
Yeah.
Is that what you want?
Yeah.
Move that up there?
Sometimes I take some of it to put in the general fund to pay bills, but when I get it all figured, we get. That moved out to a different acc- into here, so it earns some interest.
Right, so that's what I was wondering, this is different than.
Yeah, this, this just came in like last week.
Okay.
So I waited to see what we needed for bills and then I'll move the rest into PTIF.
Okay, and then and then separate from these, then you have your general fund that you transfer from here.
Uh huh, for the checking for bills and stuff, yeah, and payroll. Yeah, it just looks really high right now, cause it just barely came in. Uh-uh.
That's you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for.
Thanks for following up on that.
If we need to have a public hearing and do some tweaking on the policy, let us know. For the adding the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, just a fee.
A fee.
Yeah.
I'm sure that would take a public hearing, wouldn't it?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm not sure you need to do it for fees.
Well, you can set up, I I think that's why you have a separate fee schedule, so that you can update your fees without necessarily having to change an ordinance. Does that?
We can ask Ben, who's gonna be here in just a second.
Is he coming or calling?
I'm.
If if.
Adam's coming.
Well, no, so if we have a fee. It's it's just like the garbage fees, when we raise the garbage fees, you, we have to have a public hearing so people can come in and complain. And so if we set a fee or we raise a fee, um, those fees need to be uh. They need to have a public hearing where it's a county fee, now, for example, the ambulance fees that we we will increase. Those are based on the parameters of what the state allows you, so. If we went above any of those, we'd have to have a public hearing, however, we stay within the parameters of what the state says. This is what's allowable, then we can charge the max without having to have a public.
I I haven't code written on those in the email and I I believe it's on the agenda. But I don't know if you want to, do you have to call him?
Okay, so um. Yeah, he wanted us to prove this uh memorandum of understanding, did we do that last month?
No.
We did not, right? Cause we had to have it on the agenda, this is a memorandum of understanding uh between Bear River Mental Health and the Bear River Health Department. In which Bear River Mental Health will um come under uh one of the departments and become one of the departments of Bear River Mental Health. Um, this memorandum of understanding was drafted by Cash County, Box Elder County and our attorney, um. Because we are the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Authority, um. Uh meaning the county is, and so um this. This is simply just a memorandum of understanding um that puts them both together and gives everybody. Uh. So we can continue flowing and they'll fall under the health department, but it'll be a department within itself, and so. I know that's a long and assured answer, but.
That's probably quicker than what. So that's fine.
This is, so we would sign both of these, is that correct?
Correct. And I'm not sure.
So do you wanna make a?
Yeah, just a second here, I just was wondering if we had to have a, yeah, this one needs to be a notary. And uh. And that's the memorandum of understanding and then the other one is a resolution that um uh that.
So here's with the resolution number, here's what we can sign.
Okay.
And then we'll sign this one with later with a notary.
Okay. So I'd make, well.
Oh, hey.
Hi. Bill was just giving us a lowdown, come on up.
Okay. How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Just seeing, how are you?
Good. It's been a day or two.
Bill, Annalisa?
Hi there.
How are you?
Hi.
Glad to have you with us today.
Had you already started?
Yeah, he's told us that uh between you and Box Elder and Cash, you've come up with this MOU.
Well, yeah, and this is uh just step one, the process they're aiming for is to have. A um restructuring of the health department done by July of next year. And so this MOU is kind of just uh Rich County signing on conceptually with. With that restructuring. Uh after that, they'll be, I'll be back with other steps, you know, we don't have a interlocal agreement yet drafted or. Um any of the fond details.
So it's an interlocal agreement for Bear River, Bear River Health to do whatever the things they do in Rich County?
No, it's a, it's an interlocal agreement um between Cash, Rich and Box Elder County that. The mental health, Bear River Mental Health and the health department be combined into a health department. With Bear River Mental Health being basically their a separate department within the Department of Health.
Did you guys already get a copy?
Yeah.
They have copies?
Yes, we have. Okay. Okay. Um. Bill, you probably have a better handle on this than anybody.
There was an issue um where we felt like that we were not in compliance to have us. Bear River, so mental health and substance abuse under the state code needs to be in the same organization, basically. And so up until this point in time, um. Substance abuse was being uh provided by the health department. And mental health was being uh provided by Bear River Mental Health. And according to state statute, um they need to be provided by the same provider. Um and the reason that is, is because quite often, um and a high percentage of the time. Substance abuse and mental health are co-occurring uh disorders and so they need to be treated. Basically by the same organization, um because quite often, mental health patient will go off of their meds and then they. Try to cope with substance abuse and so. Um anyway, to make a long story short, we were out of compliance and um. It's been many years that they've been separate, but we felt like that as the three commit, the three local authorities felt like that we need to come in compliance. Um with making mental health and substance abuse in the same organization, which they would be once we bring. Bear River Mental Health into the the health department. Two separate streams of funding, um like I said, they'll be their own department, but they'll be within the health department, so.
So my understanding right now is that mental health is being provided by, it's called Bear River Mental Health, but it really is a special district.
Right.
And it's called District One.
Okay.
So I only made one copy of this, but I'm sure, uh. So right now, the existing structure, which is, this is the existing structure, we have county governing bodies, which is the county commissions of our three counties. And here we're just talking about mental health, under that, there's a special service district, uh which is called District One Mental Health Authority. And um. And underneath that district is Bear River Mental Health, which is where the actual mental health treatment is being provided. And that's a contract that's being provided here. Uh the idea is then to abolish by Ju- July of next year, uh District One Mental Health, that it'll be gone. Instead be moved over, so the new structure would be uh the county governing bodies. Uh the men, the Bear River Health Department, uh this would be moved under here and then. Little papers here. That would be what we see under Schedule A of this MOU that's being considered today. Do you have that, Bill?
I do, but I didn't copy very big.
Yeah, it's blank.
Oop.
Alright. I served a purpose today. So here's that right there. Okay, I have a big copy here. Uh so this is the idea that um. Is the kind of the framework under this MOU is gonna be aimed towards is that. And help me out here, Bill, so you go through this, but then we'll have the uh three counties' commissions at the top. Um. Who will by interlocal agreement create a unified health department that uh one of the departments of the health department will be um. What was a district and will now be moved under uh to just be a department of our u- of our unified health department. That health department will still have the ability to contract with private providers and so um. It won't, I don't think, look very different on the ground. Um assuming that they contracted with the same agencies that's doing, which they may or may not do. It also um. Uh gets us around a difficulty before that we had, which was um. Utah Code seventeen dash six A dash four, uh which prevents um county commissioners or council members. From participating in uh contracting with mental health providers and so that, I think the structure is designed to. And so that, I think the structure is designed to also obviate that, that the Health Department will do it for us. Does that seem accurate to you?
Yeah.
So this is uh just step one, um it's not the interlocal agreement yet, um it doesn't abolish the district yet. It's just a signing on that in concept that Rich County um wants to be part of that. Um I checked with the other counties, um Box Elder and Cash have already both signed on and the um uh Health Department has signed on.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we enter into the memorandum of understanding um with Box Elder and uh and Cash um for the Mental Health. And uh the Department of Health and District One Mental Health Authority to uh to combine into the Health Department.
Second that.
Okay, moving second, I'm not gonna repeat all that anyways, hope you got it. Health Department and Mental Health, MOU, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, by the same sign, motion carries.
Okay, so there's a resolution uh which authorizes uh our chairman to sign on, that's the resolution.
Okay, the move that we approved the resolution R two four dash three um for uh our parties to participate in the restructuring of the Mental Health District One.
Okay, let's take a nap.
Okay, moving second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, by the same sign, motion carries unanimously. She needs to test that.
Let's just take a few of those, right?
Here's the attachment board. So once you attest that, uh and then Sam, did you sign the actual agreement or just the resolution?
Uh I don't know if that, just the.
May I see that back?
The resolution has to be authorized.
Isn't this the resolution?
Or the memorandum has to be authorized.
And that's the document there that you'll sign. Okay. When this is uh when you back to me, you email me a copy so I get it where it goes.
Yeah, so you've got the copy though, right?
This is the main copy.
Okay. Thank you.
You just email back to me when we're done.
Yes.
Okay. While I'm here, is there anything I can
We had a question.
help you guys with or look into?
What was you gonna ask him? If we're changing building permit fees or adding a renew, they have to renew their permit before it expires and there's a fee associated, do we have to have a public hearing?
You wanna update the fees?
Yeah.
Um you hear and think that through, so we have a current ordinance, right, that sets those fees?
No, and the ordinance does not set the fee, or at least that's not, we haven't found that it has.
Building permits, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
And if they expire, we can't see where there's a fee to.
For an extension.
For an extension.
Okay, so update building permit fees. Um.
Not, we don't wanna update the building permit fees themselves, it's just a new fee, or is there a fee for an extension?
Although we wanna, we may wanna name the current fee if we can't find it anywhere.
Okay, so the current fee that you wanna, that we're contemplating adding is a fee for what?
Extension.
Just saying for.
For for a permit extension. So they're not dragging these out for a while, I mean.
We have some that are five years old.
I see. So we wanna find out, A, uh do we have a current fee for that? And B, if we don't, what would be the process to add one?
I thought we did, but um the people who were working with the building permit said she could not find an extension fee within the code.
Okay. Alright, I've tapped my head, I don't know, I'll have to look into it. Okay, any else?
Um nope. Don't make me think.
Okay. That was quick.
Yeah.
Alright, if you'll just email me that and then I'll get it to uh the other beneficiaries that are waiting for copies.
Um one, one question, was you able to generate a letter and send it to the property owners and where we've got um some issues with that drainage ditch?
Um.
On the side of Bear Lake.
Yeah, I was still waiting for their names and contact info.
Okay, well, would you step in and is Kai there today?
Does Kai know?
It sounds, I thought I heard her.
Okay.
I, I think so.
Alright, I'll talk to her my way up.
Um yeah. Let's see.
I can't even remember the one.
Yeah.
If you don't know.
Yeah, I know who it is.
Kay's gonna say he, you can't find out if you don't.
Okay, that's the name of the individual that the ditch was filled in on.
Roger, that bottom one?
Yep. And I'm not sure, the other, the landowner next to him, I'm not sure.
If I click this, give me the number.
That's, that's in the, yeah, I think probably. Yeah.
The landowner that has the issues is to the south of him.
This is, this is the man who gets flooded because the ditch was filled in.
Okay, I'll talk to Kai my way up.
And I'm not sure, the other, the other property's in like an LLC something and I'm not sure who the contact person is.
Okay. Great, I'll be in touch, thanks guys.
Thank you.
See ya.
Alright, how move we turn?
Do you guys wanna do, do you guys wanna do this business before we do that?
I don't see any minutes in here, is the minutes? Where?
Kim's here, ready, let's, let's, let's do it.
Did you say Kim? Are we doing business?
Whatever you guys want. She said she's, she's it good, so.
You need something, Mitch? What?
He has an idea to run by you. But we can do that at the end.
Okay.
If you, are you in a hurry? Okay, so you wanna do Kim?
Yeah, let's.
Let's, let's bite, take a bite of that elephant.
This is only one stack, I got nothing, but you may not need it, I don't know. Okay, let's get to these things first.
Tell us who you are and what we're doing right now.
I'm bringing back the Board of Equalization.
Thank you.
Uh information to you, so we've kind of got it set up. Uh with kind of in several orders, so let's just start right now and go through the spreadsheets, I think that will probably be the easiest. If that works for you guys.
Yes.
Okay, so the first one is the appointments that we had and do you want me to go through them one by one, do you wanna just look at them? Though I've got a couple.
Okay, so you've got, oh, yeah, over here in the explanation.
Yeah.
Um you've, the ones you've changed and the ones you have, okay.
Yeah, and the reason why. So, um and we'll get to a couple of them maybe a little bit here in just a second, 'cause I've got I've got some questions on a couple.
Are they the w- the, 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 are they the ones that came in?
These are the ones. Yes.
Okay.
Yep, these are the ones that actually came in. And I think we've discussed quite a bit of that, um when you get down to the the first one that's highlighted in yellow there, that's over on the
Okay.
the value side. Um the two smaller pieces, I think we're okay on those. Um this was the acreage up where the yurts are, back up in there. Yeah, the only question I had is the bigger piece, if you wanted me to adjust that, right now I have um acreage, it is valued at uh, I went with green belt rates, the ag, the acreage, ag acreage rates. And I've got forty nine point eight acres, that's valued at five thousand an acre, and then I've got thirteen point six acres that's valued as non-productive at three thousand an acre. If you remember, he said it wasn't worth more than a thousand an acre, but I do have some sales. One that occurred right in that same area, this, this, in the same section. However, I think it's on more of the top of the hill, going down in. Um and then I've got some sales that have occurred just to the south of this one in section eighteen, which would be up there behind Harbor Village, we're talking the same kind of ground, um.
Kind of by Casey, up top.
Yep, yep, well, they're in section eighteen, so they're behind Casey. And so that's what it's valued at per acre on those, and you see there's acreages about partway down and it say acres. You see how many acres there are, so I don't know, like I said, he talked about it all being steep and rocky, it's not all steep and rocky. I mean, some of it, yes, does go down into that ravine, I can look at more acreages. Um I went off of what my green belt maps had said, as far as when they mapped that.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have the larger piece at how much an acre?
I've got part of it at three thousand an acre and part of it at um five thousand an acre.
And how do you have that broke down?
I've got forty nine point eight and is five thousand and thirteen point six at three thousand.
And the thirteen point six, is that, that's what's really steep?
Yes, and down into that draw.
Okay.
Like I said, I went off the green belt maps to come up with those acreages when I valued it to start with. So, and like I said, the sales that we've got, um if you're done, if you wanna pass it on. Just kind of see what.
So the, the one sale is eleven thousand seven hundred an acre.
Yep, and I wrote them, I think, right on there.
So what are we, what are we doing with the GNV cabin?
I'll get to that one.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not there yet.
I agree with your, I agree that um you gotta put a value on it, maybe it's a smidge high what he was saying, but I don't think it's not valuable land, it's very nice. It's a nice property, it's not a thousand dollars an acre, for sure.
That's.
That's one of my favorite spots to go up to, is right next to his property, I think he could list it and sell it pretty easily.
That's what I'm thinking, and I know they've got a, they're, they were planning some develops ba- developments back in there, but they do have the yurts and they're not on steep rocky ground.
Yeah.
I mean, there's slope back in there, but you're gonna expect that slope back in when you've got the mountains.
And development won't make it sway.
Well, I look at what's going on right by Casey.
Yeah.
Right by Casey, they just put in brand new roads there. Which he's got now just a hop, skip and a jump from the tail end of that one road up to his place. Um I was up there just the other day.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if there's gonna be lots at the end of that cul-de-sac right there, or if it's gonna be open to access the forest. Cause it said something about a detour for public access.
Yeah.
Or public access detour or something, but they just barely are putting that new road in and it's nice. And it goes right there to where his, I mean, you can just see right at the top of a little bit of a hill, it's not even a hundred yards.
So with those values that you have on that, does that change
No.
the entire value, so that would be leaving it?
That would be leaving it alone.
Where's his name?
This guy?
Yeah.
It doesn't have it, it's a sale.
Oh, oh, it's a sale?
Yeah.
Which, which one are we comparing this to, is what I'm trying to figure out?
Comparing it to the thirty eight, to the forty, or to the sixty three point four acres on the first one that's highlighted in yellow there.
Okay.
That we talked about.
Brower.
Yep, John can probably pull it right up on his.
Remember this guy up behind Swan Village?
Swan Creek.
Swan Creek, uh.
And the forty three is the one that just sold.
Right up here.
So yeah, his is this big piece and this piece and this piece, there's a yurt right here. So, and that, I mean, like I said, it's gently sloping, there is some draws, it goes down through, but nothing too big until you get over behind this hill.
Yeah, this is a big rocky.
This is, but if you look at his stuff, I mean, it, I don't, it's not that bad, and then can you show forty three where it, the, the one that just sold?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Cause it should be, I thought it was up on top of that.
It'll be north or south.
It would have been right on top of the hill from the sounds of it with that, with the, with this, this is the.
Oh, I can put in that number. Real quick.
Yeah. Cause like I said, I think that, which it may have a view, be a little bit more valuable there because it's, it's, at least when you read this stuff at the back of the cell, it sounds like it's gently sloping off towards the Swan Creek.
This one's not popping up anything.
Not pulling it up. Cause I was thinking it was up in, up in here somewhere, um the way it read, so I think that.
Oh yeah, 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 you're right, it's, so there's, they're right around here. Forty three won't pull up, but here's forty one, like the next, the stuff next to it.
Okay, and so I'm guessing that that's gonna be closer to the Swan Creek stuff. But like I said, that's a good solid sale right there that occurred this year. Um like I said, I don't have him valued anywhere near that per acre. So my suggestion would be to leave it alone, but I, you guys had indicated possibly to maybe look at that pretty heavy. So I didn't know if you wanted to make any changes on that one. The other two, like I said, I wouldn't recommend anything, I don't, I think we're in the ballpark. And then on the next one that's highlighted in yellow, this guy had an appraisal done, he was supposed to come to Board of Equalization and he didn't. But this is the appraisal he had done, but he intentionally told them not to value the, the buildings. To do it only as land, which is basically a hypothetical situation, but he, they valued it at eleven, or one million one hundred thousand for that ground, which I didn't have it valued that high, but if that's what they're wanting and saying, that's what the appraisal is saying, that the ground is valued at, then the ground should be valued there, but he.
So they're wanting more value?
Well, I don't know, here's the appraisal.
Yeah.
And he didn't come to Board of Equalization, here's his paperwork that goes with that, um. But.
That's probably why it didn't come.
But like I said, that appraisal came in and then if you read in that appraisal, it says they asked him not to value the buildings. Well, the buildings do have value, there's a, there's a garage back kind of by the road as you come in, there's another shed there that I don't know if it's like bedrooms like spillover or if it's a storied shed. There's a little storied shed right behind the house and then the house, so I've got four buildings actually valued. Uh so I don't think we're high on the buildings, it is lakefront, but the appraisal came in and that's land only, so you have the ability to go up or down on any of these.
Is it a hun- is it a hundred foot?
Yep.
Go around.
Yep. Yep, a hundred front feet.
Hundred by hundred and fifty.
Hundred by three hundred feet deep.
Three hundred, this one's three hundred feet deep.
Yep. It's a lot of those little lots in that, uh, Real Beach subdivision.
Yeah.
So there's like lots seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty, let's see. Something like that, so there's quite a few.
You said you changed to more closely reflect recent.
The recent appraisal.
Appraisal.
That he submitted, but that's up to you guys, I, that's, that was, you know. Like I said, just going through and looking at what he had submitted and. And when they said, you know, they didn't have him value the buildings, that was. And they do have value, even though if somebody bought that piece of ground, they'd probably tear them all down and build something three times bigger.
Yeah.
And newer, but. That, you know, that's speculation and we can't, we can't go off of speculation. But the buildings do have some value, but there's also four buildings being valued there, so did you wanna look at that?
So it seemed like he was trying to get the total value included buildings down to that one point one million, but they appraised just his land at the one point one million, which is a hundred and.
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars higher than what you had it. Okay.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
So, that was.
That's kinda silly.
Well, like I said, um.
Thanks for coming in.
It creates a hypothetical situation when they do that, if there's buildings on it and they don't allow them to. But it's specifically stated in that appraisal, and I went through it pretty. Um, page by page, 'cause I couldn't figure out what they were doing and why. But that's what it looked like to me, is they did only land and it was at the request of the owner, I think it was mentioned in there a couple of times.
So that.
And then the other one, Greg and Vicky, we're still waiting on a state appeal. Um, at this point in time, I'm recommending no change. And then see what happens with state appeal, if it comes out, uh we may need, I may need to adjust for next year, I'll probably be adjusting everything for next year. 'Cause that's gonna be part of our reappraisal area, so. But that is, like I said, that's your call.
I thought, I put on my notes, I thought that it oughta matched or. The neighbors.
Okay, now the neighbors is the one that went that had remodeled.
That's true.
And these guys said they, you know, remodeled this one, but they tore down, to me it sounded like they tore down a whole part of the building. And rebuilt it. When they updated it, they were trying not to tell us that they had torn it all down. But it sounded like that's what they had done, I have there.
Wasn't their neighbor's place a hair bigger than theirs, or was theirs a hair bigger than the neighbor's?
Uh, I'd have to go grab his file, I don't remember right off the top of my head. This is the information that they have, this is all their information. Maybe I left theirs. I might've left theirs, I can go grab it, 'cause I know I have. Have a whole sit in there, I'll run grab it, and I'll grab his too. Here's theirs. All of their stuff. And this is what they were saying with Larson's stuff. There's his stuff there, um. But like I said, his had been remodeling, I don't think we had picked all of that up. His cabin, I didn't even bring his file, I can grab it, um, it is a modified A-frame, kind of a modified. I'll go, I'll get it and let you look before we're finished. If you wanna hold that to the end, I'll come back to that one. The second page is primary residences, uh, some I think qualified, and then there was a few that didn't. And that's wh- and I wrote the reason why, most of them are getting the exemptions somewhere else already for two thousand twenty-four. And that's pretty self-explanatory, um. When you're ready, let me know, and we'll move on to the appeals by mail. The ones highlighted in blue are ones that are pending on state appeal, we're just waiting to hear back. Um, and it's been in the works for a while, but those are the ones. Everything else, I think you can kinda look at what's been done, uh if they've had recent appraisals or recent sales, uh I've looked heavily at that. Worldmark, it looks like what they provided is their sales data supported what we have as val- as the value. And those values did go down from last year to this year. So. And then when we get down to the highlighted in yellow. Um, there should be some that highlighted the parcel numbers from number seven to number thirty-four. Then there's some that's highlighted over under the, uh, the adjusted value column. Those are ones that are giving me fits, and let me tell you why. Is because I kinda give you heads up in the commission. Staff meeting, that we've got these condo units that they've put together. And the first one is in Legacy Beach. Which they done, they've done two condos that way, uh where they have put. They have combined units. I'll do this. This shows sales information and what those units are. So if you look at the. If you look at the first one. Or this, yeah, if you look down through there, you can see, um, the two that are highlighted in gray on the edges. Those two are the ones that are combined. And the sales information are, is there that I have over to the, um, right-hand side of that page. I don't have a lot of information to go off of. I am in agreement that I don't think the two together. It's on two separate parcel numbers, but it's one town home unit. And I'm not so sure that it should be valued as high as it is. Um, I'm not sure what to do with these, we've got the same thing in those next highlighted ones that is in Lake Meadow Lodge. They've never amended the subdivision plats. Um, so they're on two separate parcel numbers. They were meant to be two separate condo units. But then people were buying them and they weren't built yet, they weren't finished, and so they. Talked them into doing one condo unit, a bigger condo unit, but they never went back and re-ad amended.
Make a kitchen out of one and beds and stuff out of the other.
Yeah, so instead of having two kitchens and two front rooms, they have one kitchen, one front room and an extra bedroom.
So you think it needs to come down?
I think so, I'm not exactly sure, um. 'Cause if you subtract out the land value, then it, then it kinda screws up everything else, especially in the Lake Meadow Lodge ones. And like I said, those are the next group that the parcel numbers are highlighted, and I've got the same kinda thing for you there. You'll see, uh, down about halfway down the page, you'll start to see those parcel numbers that are highlighted. And it says condo combined, and those are ones that are combined. I haven't had any sales of the combined units, but I have had Gordon Low bought two of the one-bedroom, one-bath units. For four seventy-five in June of last year. Um, the other ones that are sold, there's one up there towards the top that sold for three thirty-five in June of twenty-three. And another one that sold for three twenty in June of, or January of twenty-four, both of those are two-bedroom, two baths. Um, the information that the, the people have provided has been those two-bedroom, two-bath sales. However, these units are, these com- combined units are three-bedroom and two baths. So the ones Gordon Low bought, it wasn't a combined unit, it was two one-bedroom, one-bath units, as far as I know. Now, it's getting harder and harder to track what they're doing inside when they remodel. But. And as far as these, we've had the Mois condo. Harley Mo- Holly Martino was one that did not come to Board of Equilization, but she's got her appeal paperwork there. Gordon Low did not, I don't think he appealed, um. The Carthage Apartments, Joe Thorn, or Jonathan Thornley. Um, and the Legacy, or there, the Mois condo there under Legacy Beach.
So would these combined units have double as square footage too?
They have, no, that's the other part, is the thir- the thirteen twenty-eight for those two-bedroom, two-bath units. Is the same square footage as the other ones, just has an extra bedroom in it and not an extra bath. And it's on a one-story level, where the others are on a two-story level. They're on the back row.
Yeah, that's where you're.
So you got the back row that's two-story units, and then you got the front row that's. One-story units that were made to be one-bedroom, one-baths, but then they combined these instead. And if I take the value on the three-bedroom, two-bath, then it is, throws everything else out of whack. Then it looks like they're valued less than the. Two-bedroom, two-baths. And just take it and split it, I mean, I don't know, it's just getting more cumbersome, because if you take it and split it, that's not accurate either. 'Cause you would have a kitchen and a main room on part of it, and then bedrooms and baths probably on the other. There's, I mean, they wouldn't sell it as two separate units, does that make sense, they're selling it, they would sell it as one, one unit.
One unit.
But they've never gone back and amended the subdivision, and like I said, I've got now three areas where I've got some of these in. I've got Lake Meadow Lodge, I've got Legacy Beach, and then I have got, um, the other one that's doing this, let's see.
Idale Beach.
Idale Beach, yeah.
It should be their job to do that.
Can we trigger it, can we?
I don't know, that's part of what I'm asking, is can we? Come.
Like audit it and say, we need to combine these things, 'cause it seems like it'd be much easier if this was just combined, 'cause.
They need to. Yeah, then you would, they, then you would know which ones are one-bedroom, one-bath, which ones are for sure two-bedroom or three-bedroom, two-baths. Because I don't know that they haven't combined them.
What's, what's the difference in them combining those and? People combining lots?
That's my question, and it's gotten a lot easier to combine lots.
Mm-hmm.
And amend the subdivision than it used to be. I don't think they just wanna, I just don't think they wanna do it, and I don't know what kinda cost would be involved in doing something like that.
Yeah, it almost seems like there should've been something in the process in the building permit. Say, hey, you're doing two different things, you gotta combine them.
But they never, that was never made, and it, like I said, I've got three different condo project or townhome projects right now that's doing that.
They would've had to got a building permit, right?
Yeah, but they were way back.
Nineteen ninety-nines.
Yeah.
It's ten years ago.
Yeah.
Ninety-eight, ninety-nine.
That was bef- uh, you know, I mean, it's kinda one of those things.
Yeah.
So you would assume that they would have combined them at one point in time, but they're not. So part of my dilemma is. Do I leave them where they're at and suggest, highly suggest they combine those into one? Can that, is that something we can require, or if not, do I just try to? Look at other three-bedroom units and value them?
That's what I'd say.
'Cause the problem I have is they're appealing every single year, every year. And we go down every year, and then I take them back to where they fit. Fair and equitably within the sales and within the other ones in the, the other one-bedroom or two-bedroom, one-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to be fair and equitable, and then they all appeal again to drop the value again.
Well organized.
Yeah, and they're, they're trying to, you know, like I said, I.
Why don't, why don't you look at them? Where, where they end up with three bedrooms, why don't you look at that, I mean, I guess you have.
I've tried to look at them as best I can, and I think we're. I mean, the only other problem is I don't have any other sales here except the two one-bedroom, one-bath units that sold for the four seventy-five.
Yeah, Gordon's.
And I don't think that's accurate, and there again, that one I don't have is combined, but they may have.
Yeah, and you probably legally had to pay a separate price for both of them.
So, I, I don't know that, I just have a total for.
With separate parcels, so.
Or they, or they, it's a combined unit that I don't know about. So, I just have some dilemmas there, my gut is just saying, leave it alone for this year, we lowered it last year. Leave them alone for this year and see what shakes out for twenty-five.
Maybe we'll have some more sales we can look at.
So, like I said, we just don't have a huge number. So like I said, my gut is saying, leave them alone on those. Um, I do think the one that's over a million in the Legacy Beach one. I do have a little problem with that, I don't, he can put some comparables in there of other properties they could buy for over a million, and I see his point. You know, if they were gonna, if you're gonna spend over a million dollars, you'd probably want an entire house and not. Something like this.
Are you talking about Ideal Beach or?
Legacy Beach.
Okay, it's just highlighted?
Yeah, the Ideal Beach ones, I kinda went, they had a, two appraisals done. And so I went with what is appraisals, one was at one, uh, five forty and one was at five thirty. And that one is towards the bottom of the end, I took, I think I ended the highlight. It, it isn't a, it's on the bottom, right below the one in blue, it's the Richard and, Richard Bessie. The two last, uh, the, the second. From the bottom there, the, the last two and three, or the second and third ones from the bottom, does that make sense, that was a long way to say that. And they did have a recent appraisal done, but he indicated in that appraisal that there's no kitchen in those. No kitchen and main and like a living room. But they do have another condo unit that I'm guessing would be the kitchen and the main. With some bedrooms in it, and then they've done the, made the other eight-bedroom, eight-bath. Which I don't have any other uh eight-bedroom, eight-bath condos to even compare to. But the appraisal bro- appraiser broke it down and went four bedrooms and four baths. And so, I think it wa- he said four bedrooms, four bath in one and four bedrooms and three baths in one. So, I think temporarily I've solved the one at Ideal Beach. The ones at the, uh. Legacy Beach are the ones I really have a question on, and I don't know if you guys want to change the, the other ones. Uh, my gut's saying no at this point, but. And then it, the last page. Um, on those mailing ones, um. The top two are. The top two are Peterson's, and he bought out his family members. Now, he said in there that he had a, that he had gone with a, um. They had a written cash offer. Or had a cash offer on those two parcels, they're lakefront parcels. They're up by the, the Nebiker, all the Nebiker stuff at the south end of the. Or the north end of Bear Lake on the east side.
North end of the Utah side.
Of the Utah side, yes. Sorry, I'm talking Utah when I talk Lake.
Yeah, yeah.
No item. So, there are a couple of big pieces, one is a bigger piece, uh, let's see, I have. Sorry, I got too dang many stacks. I had him at the, as a question, so. So he said the cash offer, well, this is what he had said.
Was it two million dollars?
Two point five.
Okay.
One of them is forty-four point oh-seven acres, and that's the forty-two, the first one, that ends in zero, 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 five. The other one is a five-point-three-six acre piece, and that ends in zero, 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 two. Right now, they're on green belt. And I've got the first, the biggest one valued at five point six million, just over that, and the other one is valued at two point seven. Uh, he's got two, more than two hundred and fifty front feet on the forty-four acre piece. I stop at two fifty, and then everything over that is an acreage rate. Because I don't think that, in order to develop that, they'd have to incur some cost. And same thing on the other one, I stop at two fifty and then go with an acreage rate for everything. So it's at, uh, two fifty feet, let's see, two twenty-five feet deep and two fifty feet wide. Is where my base lot stuff stops, and then we put on an acreage rate after that. He technically bought it from relatives, so it's not an arms-length transaction. I don't have any proof of the written or the cash offer at two, two point five. But that is substantially lower than, I've got a sale that's a hundred fr- front feet. That's, it's in a subdivision, of course, but it sold for one point five million, just for a hundred front feet. And these are, these are far bigger than that. So. Um. Like I said, he's, he said that at before they agreed to go ahead and sell at the two, with the two point five offer. They had offered it to anybody else in the family, because he was a Peterson that was a, part of the Nebiker P properties. He was the P in there, so they owned a percentage of interest in the first place. But the rest of the family offered if they wanted to buy out the others at the two point five. And so he did, and.
Which, what's his first name?
Chris. And so he thinks it's a fair offer, however, when I'm looking at it, it's a family transaction, so it's not arms-length. And like I said, I don't have any proof of the, of the offer that was made, I have no doubt that it, there probably was. But, so in his mind, the one should be valued at two point something, the bigger piece, and the small one should be at two hundred and something. And I don't, I, I don't agree with that at this point. But, like I said, it is in green belt, so the problem is if they choose to develop it or take it out of green belt. Because his taxes are very low, because it is in green belt. But if he were to develop that and we pull it out, it's the rollback tax and it would be substantial.
That five years would cost quite a bit of money.
It would be substantial with that.
Stick with it.
But I still don't agree, I, I, I think we're missing something. I, I don't, it just doesn't sound quite right with that kinda acreage. But I don't have any other big properties that have sold that have lakefront like that. They're very rare.
Not making any more of it.
No, and like I said, that seems extremely low.
Whoops, later part is for this year, yeah.
Okay. And then the ni- the last one that's highlighted there, um, those are the two ones that were filed late. The first one, or the last one, uh, it was a recent sale, they had just closed on it. If you need a refresher, here's the, here's the thing on it. The other one was the lady, the one that's highlighted, um, she was the one that, uh, had written multiple notes to you. And so, and I know Bill said you would take them on a case-by-case basis. Um, on the one that's, the highlighted one, here's some sales information for Sweetwater, the Sweetwater Park subs. I have done statistical analysis on those, and if you look, there's the mean, median and mode. Mode is the one that occurs the most often, median is the median price. Um, and then the mean would be the average basically of those sales that have occurred. You can look at there, there's a few that occurred in twenty-four, the rest occurred in twenty-three. Acreages range from one acre to one point three-four acres, and the sales prices are all over the board, as you can see. I have them valued at a hundred and five for vacant land.
I think you probably, where you've got those sales there, it would probably be good to go with the mode.
Okay.
On those, um, because you do have some sales, even though you're like, like you said, they're all over the place.
Okay, no problem with that. Then, if there's others that are in the same subdivision, should I go back and, that have appealed? Adjust those as well for the length? Okay.
And that's, that's her too, right, Nicole?
That's her.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one he's talking about using the mode on that.
Got it, I agree.
So, I have no problem with that. And are you okay here in the, or accepting those two late files? For the, with the circumstances that were there?
She's one of them and the other one's the other, okay, yeah, sure.
Yes.
Well, that's a lot of work, holy cow.
Um, and then the very last page is mistakes and corrections, most of those I've already corrected. You can see there, there's, there were several, there was five that were state assessed. And then there were some, I had to burn on the wrong piece, uh, there was some, uh, Annaliese Bell. And, not Annaliese Bell, Brian Bell's ground over here with Perry Norris, that was incorrect, and we had to fix those. And I think we've got those fixed there now, so. Any questions? We, that was kind of a quick or long, however you look at it, way to get through those. Um, any problem on leaving the first highlighted in yellow, well, the fir- on the first page, leaving them the same?
No.
Nope.
Okay, um, and then what about the ones in blue? Those are the ones that were pending a state appeal outcome.
I think we wait.
I think if we wait, they, they still have the opportunity to appeal to the state as well, so. Um, the others, the Daniels one, um, that's the one in Legacy Beach that I don't think it should be worth over a million dollars. Um, do you want me to go ahead and adjust that? From Marshall and Swift down?
Yeah, I think you said.
Yeah, those are almost like one and a half times, cause they, a, a big portion of it was either for the boats. They've combined a, and instead of building, cause I've been in all those, those properties, instead of building it out, they just made a big boat yard. But they still have additional room.
Yes.
So I, I agree with you, it probably shouldn't be twice as much.
Yeah, that's kinda what I was concerned about, especially on that one. The others I wasn't too concerned. Any questions on anything else?
I think we approve your recommendations.
Like I said, most of it was based on discussions that we had and then.
Look to me like, what few notes I took and stuff, I think we're, I agree.
Okay, I'll second Bill's motion to approve it.
Okay, we got a motion to approve and a second, uh, assessor's recommendations.
With those changes.
With the changes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, your effort.
Thank you.
If I can gather up all of your paperwork back, I will get you a final copy and a corrected copy to make those changes. And I will take just a minute or two to get all of my crap back down the hall.
Without shuffling it?
With, well, it's all been shuffled, I'll just re- put it back where it was supposed to be. I did have a method to my madness. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Can I keep this stuff or no? It's just the copies you made for us.
Oh, yes, if you wanna, if you want the information, absolutely.
Yeah.
You okay with that? Okay, thank you. I just don't want a lot of it out there, because it's considered confidential, so.
Yeah, yeah, you're not, or in the box or. All the rest of it goes.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kim, thank you. Okay, why don't you come up Mitch and give these?
Cause if we finish these items, then we can close the meeting.
I'll adjourn this out, okay? Okay, okay, okay.
I would make a motion that we, um. Appoint Gilbert and Stewart, um, to do our audit for the twenty-twenty-three, uh, external audit for Rich County.
Okay, I will, is that a yearly or is that a five-year thing?
Well, it's, let's, it's based on, let's have them do it for twenty-twenty-three or. Let's contract with them for twenty-four. Uh, the twenty-four year to audit the twenty-twenty-three, uh, year, and then we will review the audit and then make a. A determination whether we wanna extend, um, their contract or, or our F P.
Okay, I second that.
Okay, moving.
Motion.
Moving, seconded that we get Gilbert and Stewart to, to that audit, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By the same sign, motion carries.
Okay, we have a resolution from the Utah counties and then we for, um. God, I saw someone here. Um. And, uh, we need to appoint a representative and an alternate representative who will attend the membership meeting on November twenty-second. Um, and we need to, uh, there's a, should be a resolution. That came with this.
I think it's, uh, right above it, one page above that, Bill? No, I got it then, or at least I got a copy of it.
Okay, we just, the governing body of Rich County has been formed by the bylaws of the pool to require a representative. By majority vote of the governing body of the members of the members official representative for the purposes of the pool. Uh, we therefore appoint whichever, uh, has a representative, a voting representative at the membership group.
Who's currently, you're doing it, Sim or you are Bill?
We both are.
Sim's the at-large guy?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, do you just, you wanna keep doing it? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we appoint Bill as Rich County representative for the Utah County indemnity pool membership. Um, to attend those meetings and represent Rich County.
And you wanna have Sim as the, the alternate?
Yep, and, and Sim is the alternate.
Second that motion.
Moving, seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we have a copy of the minutes, have you read the minutes, John?
Nope.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the expenditures.
Second?
Moving, seconded, approve the expenditures for September, or, yeah, Sep.
These are from first of September to the thirtieth of September.
Yeah, September, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Get the proof of minutes.
I'm good.
Okay. I'm, I moved that we approved the September fourth, um, minutes for the Rich County Commission meeting.
Second.
Moving, seconded that we approved the minutes for last month, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moving, seconded, adjourn, all in favor say aye, cheer, any opposed? Motion carries.